...service of the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication at Washington.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for this anticipatory quiet that we've got going on. But today is March 7th, 2016, and this is the regular meeting of the Moscow City Council. I'm Art Betke, the council president, sitting in for Mayor Lambert, who's in Washington, DC this week, with Walter Steed for the National League of Cities meeting, also with Gary Redner, who's now represented by Jim Pifner, and one absentee John Weber on the end, who's off on vacation. So with our stripped-down, yet still quorum-fulfilling group up here, we shall proceed forward. So to start us off, Jim, it's your night to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good stuff. First up on tonight's agenda is a proclamation that I will be delivering on behalf of the mayor, and it's the Fair Housing Proclamation. Whereas April 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and whereas the Idaho Human Rights Commission has prohibited discrimination in housing since 1969, and whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, and whereas equal access to housing is an important component of that goal, as fundamental as rights to equal education and employment, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health instability, and whereas housing choice influences people's exposure to crime and drugs, and their access to education, employment, social and cultural resources, and healthcare, and whereas we have enacted laws to ensure equality of choice for all transactions involving housing, and whereas the mission of the City's Fair and Affordable Housing Commission includes researching, analyzing, and recommending to the mayor and council ways in which the city may further fair housing practices, and whereas among the duties of the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission are to review the city code analysis and impediments to fair housing and action plan each year, and to recommend changes as it may deem necessary, and whereas ongoing education, monitoring, and public outreach are keys to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas barriers to fair housing will only be eradicated through broad-based and consistent cooperation, commitment, and support. Now, therefore, Bill Mayor, the city -- mayor of the City of Moscow, does hereby proclaim April 2016 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Moscow, and he urges all citizens to support programs and policies that prevent or eliminate discriminatory housing practices. That's a lot of "whereas's." Next up is the consent agenda.
Your Eminence?
Sir.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I would second that motion.
Other contributions?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll start with -- I guess we'll start with you. We'll do it there.
Aye.
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 Okay, that's passed.
Okay.
Every group has a different way of taking their votes. Any staff recognitions on behalf of Gary Redner?
We don't have any staff recognitions this week, thank you.
Okay. Next up is item number three, which are the mayor's appointments, and tonight we actually have real live appointments. We have John Freeland, who the mayor has appointed to the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission with an expiration date of 12/31/2017, Lawrence Rose to the 1912 Center Development Committee with no expiration date, David Griffith, the Tree Commission, expiring December 31st, 2018, John Scoggan to the Sustainable Environment Commission, expiring December 31st, 2018, and Dave McGraw to the Urban Renewal Agency, expiring December 31st, 2016.
Your Honor? I'd move to approve the slate of appointments.
Second?
Seconded by Catherine. Any discussion? Okay, you're up.
Um, aye.
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 Welcome to the city commissions, those who are appointed.
Are there anybody here -- is there anyone here?
Yeah, do we have anybody here who just got appointed?
Dave.
Reappointed.
Reappointed. So please come up and say a few words if you'd like.
Point him out.
Dave McGraw.
Rarely passes up on a turn to speak.
Reappointed to the Urban Renewal Agency.
Rarely passes up. Eminence, submayor, scab mayor, whatever, thank you, and councilman. I guess I just wanted to say a few words about the URA, Moscow's URA in particular. It's -- you look around the state, Art, you've heard this before, I've said this many times, and I'm very proud to be on this board. You look around the state, we look only south of us, and we see the Nespris County Commissioner suing the city, the city suing the Nespris County Commissioners over the URA. Sounds like a big hubbub gonna happen in Twin Falls here pretty soon about their URA. Moscow's URA is done, and it's done right, and it's -- if some of the other URAs around the state would look at the way that we do our URA here, we wouldn't have the legislature looking at ways to try to regulate our URAs. We've done some great things. We've done some really good things with our URA. We just closed one out a year early, hardly ever even heard of before. We've made some mistakes, but we've tried to learn from those mistakes, and we're gonna try to get them right. I look at this property on the corner of Sixth and Jackson, without the URA, that would still be an old chemical warehouse, and it would be for many, many, many years to come. So I'm very proud to be a part of this, and I want to thank you very much for allowing me to serve on this board. And again, Moscow URA is done right, and it's done the way it should be done, and you all can be very proud of the work we do on that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the council.
You're welcome. Also worth pointing out, the URA has returned $870,000 of funds back to the taxing entities this year. So there's a little bit of extra money to the county, the city, the library, cemetery district, and everyone else as a result of the activities of the URA. Anybody else out there who was appointed who'd like to say a word or two to us? Okay, hearing none there. The next item on the agenda is the public comment and mayor's response period. And for the next 15 minutes, anyone who has anything to say to the council and through us to the city that's not on the agenda tonight, nor currently pending before either this body or the Planning and Zoning Commission, just pop up to the microphone, announce your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Tim Gressback. I live at 614 South Adams Street. I'm an attorney. My business is at 210 East 7th Street. And I'm here tonight to, again, just briefly describe to you what's happening at the busiest community recreation center on the Palouse. That is, what's happening at the ice rink. Several things are happening lately. Just the last weekend, Councilman Carscallan was nice enough to come out on Friday to drop the ceremonial puck for our nine- and 10-year-olds. They're called squirts. We had about six or eight teams come in from other communities, staying in our hotels, using our restaurants, and doing some shopping. And sometimes I think folks wonder why it is that people become so passionate about the ice rink. What does it do? And I just wanna put -- help you put some faces on that passion. And three reasons for the passion of folks that are advocating the expansion of that rink to a full-size rink, we've got three reasons right here tonight. These gentlemen learned to play at our little rink. These are the captains from the high school team. They just won the championship up in Canada. We play in a Canadian league. About 60% of the teams in our league are Canadian teams. So we go up there. And that's where they competed. They won five games in a row. Five games in a row to win the championship. They have all been invited out to Pittsburgh, these captains. They've been invited to Pittsburgh to try out, to be seen by coaches from the junior ranks to the D1 schools, to all the different colleges. They learned to skate at our little rink. That's the only place they've ever learned to play. They're not from another community and moved here. They learned to skate at our 16-year-old, three-quarter size rink. But for them to have their home games, because the rink is too small, they have to -- would travel up to Cheney. That's where they had to play their home games. So this is Ben Ting. You might know his parents, Jess and Dr. Robert Ting. That's Isaiah Lee in the middle. He was playing close to 50 goals this year in probably a record. He may have made -- you may have beat your own record or come close to it. Next to Isaiah is Keith McGuire. His parents are Shelley and Mark McGuire. I've watched these youngsters move from boys to men. And it's not just how outstanding they are to get a tryout like that in Pittsburgh, to get invited to Pittsburgh, but the way they treated their teammates. They brought the play up of the entire team, notwithstanding their great talent, they couldn't bring that championship home alone. They inspired their teammates. And so it's not just that they accomplished great things in terms of wins and losses. I think this community should be so proud of the way they did it. They respect the game. They respect their teammates, and they respect the officials and the parents. So I've just had a great time watching them play this year. And we've got some more proposals coming before the council that's in the works, and we're trying to finalize that vision and the plan, that we're not gonna have a Taj Mahal for a rink. It's gonna be very pedestrian, but it'll be full-size. And I just know, I never had the pleasure to meet Bobby Hamilton. I know if he was looking down, this is exactly the type of project that I think he had in mind. The amount of kids we have and go through the door, through the doors, week after week. So thank you so much. Thank you for letting me introduce and showcase these fine young gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody have any questions?
I do, actually.
Tim, come back.
Tim, I have a question. My question has to do, I saw kids playing lacrosse today. So when the weather's inclement, or when there's no more ice on the rink, can you have -- will lacrosse fit?
We've had numerous types of things. Once the ice is out, they play broom ball. They can play rollerblade hockey. We've -- it's for the fair. It can be to keep the fair if there's ever rain in September during the fair time. So yes, they could do things. We want it to be multi-use. And so absolutely would be used in the -- they do a plant sale there every spring. I mean, this is, it's a community center, and we want it to be multiple use. And so when the students are studying at night, that's when the adults play. And there's a robust -- there's no more room for the adult leagues. They're full. And I don't know what it is in the water in Moscow. We didn't have a history of hockey, but in 16 years with this little rink, they're reaching the upper echelons of the game. And they're ours. They learn to play here. Anything else?
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for showing up and being excellent representatives for Moscow. Good stuff, guys. Thank you. And we look forward to hearing any proposals associated with the rink. So bring 'em on. Anybody else got any comments during the mayor's time here, even though he's not here to listen in on what people have to say? Okay, hearing none. We're on to item number four, which is, no, item number five, which is the Citizens' Commission Report for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mike Ray presenting.
Thank you, council members. It's my honor tonight to introduce Wendy McClure, who's the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Rod?
Good evening, lady and gentlemen's of the council. I'm going to speak about our achievements during the year of 2015, and ongoing work as well for the Planning and Zoning Commission. First of all, membership. We gained two members this year. First, Rob Parish, and most recently Dennis Wilson. And I want to say at this time, one person who's not on this list is Mike Ray, who is our staff liaison. And when I first came on the commission, Bill Belknap was our liaison, and he was fantastic. And I thought, how could anybody ever live up to what Bill did? And he trained Mike well. He's just a fabulous support for our commission. So, okay, so our 2015 projects. One that has already been through council about a year ago, that was several years in the making, is the accessory dwelling units. I think two of you were on the commission when that started. And it certainly was ongoing when I joined the commission. But at any rate, I guess there's three of them that have been constructed to date, which the accessory dwelling, for those of you who don't know, is the opportunity to construct a secondary dwelling unit that is accessory to a single-family dwelling. Owner occupancy is required. The occupancy limit is two. The square footage is limited to 600 square feet, and additional off-street parking, one stall, is required. And that was one of our major projects for several years. We looked at light manufacturing, because there had been some requests to integrate low -- lower-impact manufacturing into across several zoning districts, and revised the definition of it, and removed the conditional use permit requirement in some zones where there's low impact, and introduced the conditional use permit in other zones as oversight of going through with the light manufacturing. And I guess the request initially came from Biketronics, is that right? No?
I've just listened to her a couple of times.
Oh. Okay, yeah. In terms of temporary uses, sort of a similar thing, when we have a zoning code that unless something is expressly permitted, it's not allowed, and they're -- so a way to really work with temporary uses like food carts, food trucks, et cetera, and allow them, get them as part of our zoning code, with standards in terms of access, et cetera. Outdoor uses as well, sort of in the same vein, allowing certain outdoor uses in some of our commercial zoning districts. Mike brought us the floodplain ordinance. We've, I guess the city, over the years, working with the university, has been able to improve the floodplain situation in Moscow, so it's contracted. And also to bring our ordinance into alignment with current federal emergency management, what was the association standard? Yeah, thank you. FEMA, I've always just thought of it as FEMA. But anyway. And so we worked on that and got it up to date. So quite a bit of our work in recent months has been updating things. Legacy crossing, which you heard about earlier tonight, is there was a -- we looked at changing some of the design guidelines to reduce the window area requirement for ground floor uses, realizing that some of the market demand that was revealed through a market study indicated that residential and medical office uses have a -- there's a strong need for them, and maybe there isn't as much need for a full storefront on the ground floor as was initially envisioned. And so we made some modifications there. And also just contradictory parking requirements where the code is in alignment with what is actually stated in for legacy crossing. The central business district also looking at the ability to have residential uses on the ground floor under, in certain areas of the central business district through a conditional use permit. Current projects, we're -- this one is, this one is a big one. We've been updating relevant criteria and standards for land use actions to bring them in compliance with the Idaho Land Use Act. And it's just mostly the wording of things. And so Mike has brought us each, at each meeting, sort of a piece, whether it's planned unit developments or comprehensive planning, but changing the language to get it in conformance with other jurisdictions, and also the -- and he's brought us samples from many communities each time, and we've looked at tweaking our language so it falls within compliance, and also is maybe a little streamlined in some cases. And updating the parking lot standards, we're working on that one right now, revising existing, the existing street tree program for new subdivisions, and creating a use table in the zoning code. So these are ongoing right now. And I guess with that, does anybody have any questions? And Mike will probably be better qualified to answer them than I will, but I'll try. Yeah.
Wendy, of the three accessory dwelling units, were they all freestanding, or were a couple of them part of an existing building?
Yeah, I'll let Mike address that, because he's seen them, so.
I'm interested in that, because I was on P&amp;Z when that got started, and--
Sure. Yeah, we have one that's actually being constructed or converted. It used to be, it was a garage, and now they're converting that into some livable space on one portion. There's gonna still be a garage bay on one side. And then the other two were internal to a home. So they were, in this circumstance, they had a bonus room above a garage. And you can't tell from the street, it just looks like a single-family dwelling, and they ended up creating a small accessory dwelling unit above the garage on the house, but it was attached, so.
I've got one. Could you talk a little bit about what's going on with the street tree ordinance looking to?
Well, we had formed a subcommittee, which was comprised of some contractors, subdivision developers, land use attorney, a couple citizens, and a couple Planning and Zoning Commission members. And they were reviewing really the best way to proceed with getting more trees planted within subdivisions. Anytime you have a new subdivision, you're required to dedicate, or the subdivision developer is required to submit a certain amount of money to a street tree fund, and then in return, as the houses are developed, then either the property owner's able to receive a voucher, or contractor who built the house is able to receive a voucher. And then they're able to plant the trees within the tree lawns, you know, however many trees are allotted per each lot. And we were seeing, you know, varying degrees of trees getting planted in subdivisions. Sometimes you had full build-out, and there was only 50% of the funds in the street tree fund for that particular subdivision that ended up being utilized. And so we're, you know, working with Parks and Recreation Department and trying to maybe rework that program a little bit. And so we wanted to go to the people that are, you know, directly involved, the contractors, the subdivision developers, and get their input as to, you know, what they would like to see before we ended up proceeding. And so that's what we've done at this point. And now we're, you know, it's coming back. We're gonna have a meeting probably in the next week or two to discuss probably the best portion of the city code to put that. And then we'll work through Planning and Zoning Commission, and then probably, you know, move forward with a proposal to city council over the next few months.
So maybe with an eye towards, as the houses are completed, the trees go in as part of the development, as opposed to relying on the homeowner eventually to put them in after the fact?
Yeah, I think the recommendation coming from the advisory committee was that it was gonna be tied to the certificate of occupancy. So as soon as somebody, you know, all the work's done, and they're able to move into the house, then we tie that to that, and that'd just be one of the requirements that they'd be required to do. We did hear a little bit of concern from contractors who wanted, you know, maybe it's in the middle of winter where you aren't able to plant the tree, snow on the ground. And usually, we'd issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, but banks have gotten a little bit more hesitant to do that. They want a full certificate of occupancy before they're gonna release the home loan. And so in those circumstances, we're looking at the contractor being able to have a deposit. So they'd come in, you know, typically for improvements, they're required to submit some type of security or deposit. And we just handle it in that fashion. So, you know, maybe it's $400, and, you know, three, four months away, they're able to plant the tree, and then they can recoup the security. Or if they never do it, then the city has that money to go out and hire somebody to do it themselves. And thus, we get the, you know, 100% tree planted in subdivisions, so.
Cool. Anybody else got anything?
Thank you.
No, thank you, Wendy. Thanks, Mike. Next up, item number six, the Farmer's Market Annual Report, starring our very own Kathleen Burns.
Well, I have before you a short presentation from the 2015 Farmer's Market Year-end Report. And I just wanted to highlight, this is last year's poster, and currently, there's a call for artists for the 2016 poster. So that's active right now. And these two photographs were done by Zach, our sound guy in the back, who also works at the market. And he's a very good photographer and video person, so yay, Zach. So I like to list the partnerships that are in the community that help out with the market, because there's a lot of people that are involved with the market, and they don't always get credit for being involved with the market. And I highlight the Moscow Pullman Daily News, because they always list the music for the weekend and any special events that are in the market. So they accept our press releases and put them into print. So it's very valuable to us. And then KRFP, NWPR, KUOI, the University of Idaho Radio, they're very good at promoting the event as well. And then Backyard Harvest is our facilitator for EBT, so they're very important. We have several AmeriCorps that work with the market, Jessica Briarly and Adam Lane. And then just recently, the help with the University of Idaho Photo Services to take the shots of the market on Main Street. This last year, we were voted number one market in the state of Idaho by Farmland Trust, which is a national group, and we decided to celebrate, because that was five years in a row that we were nominated number one. We were also nominated one of the top 25 farmers markets in the nation. And this was a kind of a big deal, and we kinda, we've been going long, and finally, we hit this fifth-year mark. And I said, it's time to celebrate. So the mayor gave an opening speech at 8:00 in the morning, and Gritman Medical Center made 100 cupcakes with number one on the top, and we chose to celebrate. So we're pretty proud of this. We had the High Five Passport Program this last summer. This is our second year. And you can see from the top, we had over 1,324 participants. And these are all little kids. And the photograph in the right-hand corner there kinda explains tasting, and if, it's kinda like a dot survey for little people. But do they like turnips? Do they not like turnips? So it was a very successful program, and we listed the volunteers that helped with the program, whether it was cooking classes, activity classes, or tasting classes. And I always list the volunteer, the value of volunteers on a national level, and then also the state of Idaho average. So this was our day sheet. And this was our first introductory year using a day sheet at the market. This year, we're gonna expand on using the day sheet. We'll actually have an iPad at the market, and we'll be able to calibrate numbers onsite as we go through 26 weeks of market days. So these are just some day statistics from the market. And I've been asked about the figure, the 1,241. So Jim Bolin, these are possible 99 spaces per day that were utilized through the course of 27 market days. So the total of spaces that were used and allocated on Main Street to seasoned vendors. The rest of the numbers are walk-on spaces that were allocated, whether they were full spaces, shared spaces, table spaces, which is just a three-by-three, child vendors that participated in the market, and then performance artists, music buskers, and the like. So we're gonna be improving on this day sheet. We're meeting, it's on our agenda for the Farmer's Market Commission meeting this week. We're looking at different samples from other markets nationally and how they're calibrating. So this is just another way to look at the music on Friendship Square. We have two time slots, 9:30 to 10:30 are volunteer non-paid, 11:30 to 1:00-- to 1:00 are paid performances. So, we had 25 non-paid, 26 paid. We had the Tai Chi from the Confucius Institute in the market on the first Saturday of every month for six months. So, that was a great addition as well. So, then when you go into volunteers, this is where the AmeriCorps, um, is very important to us in the market, because Jessica Briarly, as Amanda Argona did, um, reaches out to the community and engages commission members to be in the market. So, various commissions have been already signed up for the 2016 market season. Um, we have the High Five Kids Program. We have chefs in the market coming as well. Um, we have the U of I Extension and Master Gardeners, um, Leito County Human Rights Day. Um, we're working with Migratory Bird Day. And then, uh, we have the Great Moscow Food Drive. Um, we're working on that right now. And also working with Canine companions. So, all of these people are volunteering to be in the market as well. So, um, this is some of our marketing that, um, we probably reduced our marketing quite a bit. In 2015, you can see the hard cost was 1,586.30. In 2014, the cost was 6,291.31. And that, Walter's not here to take credit for this, but that was his over-the-street banners. The construction of the poles, the hardware, the rigging, and then the physical banners themselves was quite costly, but that's done. So, then we go into social media, and this is primarily what we rely on now for networking and marketing in the market. Um, DJ updated some of these stats today. We're now up to 3,696 fans, friends, on, um, the Farmer's Market Facebook site. And then we do weekly posts. We post even during the winter, what's happening with market vendors, uh, the growing season, starting seeds, um, what the vendors are doing. And then the Twitter feed is connected to the Facebook. And so, the market manager, um, does Twitter feeds on the day of at the market. And then we rely on some other social media sites. Those are listed on the bottom. We do get a lot of Visit Idaho, um, with the Department of Commerce. We get a lot of hits off of the state site as well. So, this last year, we were, um, helped out the state. Um, they just passed this legislation to update the cottage food laws in the state of Idaho. And we held three meetings here in this room, um, with, um, Patrick Guzzel. And, uh, that legislature, legislative action just took place in January, just to update the Idaho food code. So, we use this facility in this room for our vendors and various people in the public to come in and find out about the food code. This is our commission, and we have one commissioner member in the room right now, David Pierce. And he's right over there with his red and black hat. So, what's really important is what the commission does. We have an hour and a half meeting this week on Wednesday. Then we'll have another meeting on the 23rd of March to look at fees for the fee resolution for the 2017 budget. But some of the things that the Farmer's Market Commission does besides meeting is they do onsite farm visits. They have subcommittees that work on policy work. Um, we're working with Rod right now with policy changes for the 16 season. And then they actually volunteer in the market on, um, certain market days with set up and take down. Um, they helped a lot with the Need Feed Seed Survey. They're always there to help with cooking demos. And, um, so they provide a lot of service to the city. So, I just added up the hours that they spent and put a value to their hours, um, in volunteer time in Idaho. So, this commission does a lot of work, and they deserve a lot of credit. This is a snapshot of doing annual, um, vendor site visits. This year, it took us pretty long and far. And you can see Dr. Pierce in the field there. They went as far away as Stan, Stanford, Oregon for the Berry Guy, um, Akeley Farms. They went to Wappato for the Boothmans, Calhoun's. Also went to Tonamaker Hill Farm in Royal City. And then, there's a small shot, snapshot there of Woodland Apiaries. And we did another honey vendor as well in St. Mary's. So, um, we do go out and do farm inspections, check on product, um, ask a lot of questions, and gather a lot of information. And that's time well spent. Um, this is just a season snapshot of who's in the market and what our profile is of our vendors, um, just to give you a percentage-wise. Um, but we're very proud to say that, you know, in seasoned vendors, we're still pretty high with produce and nursery. So, we can still consider ourselves a farmer's market. I like to emphasize that. It's not a flea market. It's not a craft market. Um, it's not an art market. It is a farmer's market. So, we're very proud of that. Um, this is your EBT numbers from Backyard Harvest. Um, you can see the, the numbers went down a little bit in 2015. Um, hopefully, we'll boost that up again. Um, Backyard Harvest had a grant for double-up bucks. So, there was matching numbers going out. And that equated to an additional $4,847 that matched the EBT. So, if you wanted to spend $10 in EBT, you, they would match it up to 20. So, that was very valuable. That was a Finney grant. And we'll go through with another match grant this summer for 2016. The good news is, is you look at the bottom line, and farmers in our market were paid $13,811 in EBT, which is food stamps. So, these are your fees collected and how they're broken down. Um, seasoned vendor fees versus walk-on fees. Um, we have a little more walk-on vendors in the market. Uh, their, their fees, um, are relative to seasoned vendor fees. There's just more repetition of walk-on vendors than seasoned vendors. And these fees are based on, um, booth spaces, small faces, spaces, corner spaces, truck spaces, uh, kids, um, all different spaces in the market. These are your total year-end sales reports. This is what a lot of people are very interested in. You can see the top sales in 13, 563,006.47. Then in 14, it was 1,162, 432. And then you get down to 2015, and you have 1,177,391. So, that's an estimated, since we do pay tax on food in Idaho, we round that out. It looks like we could be paying up to $70,643 in state tax. That's not local tax, it's state tax. So, then when we look at the final, financial recap of the market, we're getting closer, um, to cost as far as services paying for themselves. Um, the market revenue for 2015 was $45,000 plus. Um, after, um, staff expenses and program expenses, um, we are still ahead a little bit. So, then you go into indirect costs with other departments in the city. And then go, get down to total salary expenses, direct and indirect. And we're looking at subsidization of the market at roughly 17,954, which is a little bit less than 24,000, considerably less than 36,945 in 2013. So, we're doing a better job with our finances. So, these are some of the services that different departments do. I like to give credit to the police because they do come down to the market. They deal with impound and moving cars in the middle of the night, things that we never even see. They help us out with animal control, extra patrol. Legal is here. Rod helps with policy and procedure review for the market. Um, the water department supports us with the drinking fountain, gray water receptacle in Jackson Street Lot, the drinking fountain in the Jackson Street Lot. Uh, carry and engineering is a great help with us with mapping, directional signs. Administration answers the phone when we don't get to the phone. They help a lot with hold harmless, press releases, and then, um, just a lot of different paperwork. Park and Rec is our number-one garbage people, which is awesome. They help with fountain maintenance, cleaning of Friendship Square, um, help us with power issues on Friendship Square. And then the street department does a lot of street cleaning. Joe's in the audience, and Joe gets credit for coming down and doing onsite inspections for tent weights, um, fire extinguishers, open flame, flameproofing tents, and then electrical cords, which is very valuable. And the arts department is pretty busy with the market. So, that whole paragraph is what we got going on downstairs, which is great, because we're pretty busy. So, then I'm just gonna close with some of the great shots that photo services from the University of Idaho put together. We've used some of these photos with, uh, video that we just produced, thanks to Zach, for, um, a grant. And we're hoping that propels us forward. So, with that, any questions? Any answers? Dan?
Kathleen?
Yep.
I was going back, your daily sheets, I guess?
Good, yep.
Uh, you had about four dogs a day and 18 smokers a day. How many of those are repeat?
Um, you know, I'd like to say none, because actually, we're pretty gentle with our enforcement. And once we cite the ordinances, and we have little quarter-page handouts, if we have a problem, that's where the police come in. But in general, we work with kindness a lot, and it seems to be pretty effective. And it's less this past year. Of course, this last year was the first non-smoking market, so.
Unless you were just plain breathing during August.
Oh, yeah. That was, that was rough. But I think as we deal with tourists coming in, people from out of state, people from out of region, it's an education.
And then the other one, uh, you know, we looked at the sales in 13, 14, and 15. We weren't tracking as tight in 2013. We really started that in 14, right?
Right.
So, I mean, we could've been right up there with the sales in that one as well.
Correct.
It's kind of a.
Right.
Hard to, to, it'd be nice to see what 16 does to see how we're, if.
And in 16, we're hoping to use the Manage My Market system that we have, because they have a portal for recording sales. And then we'll get rid of the paper tracking. And that'll speed it up a little bit.
Good.
Yep?
Thanks.
I have a question about, um, because the market, um, starts and finishes when school's in session, is there any outreach to get students involved in part of the volunteering?
That's a good question and good comment. So, Jessica, current, our current AmeriCorps, has been up, um, to U of I to do outreach for, um, different fairs that they have. And she is recruiting volunteers. So, we do have a volunteer form that they have to fill out and become notarized. And so, she's working with getting more volunteers.
And then at the high school level, I would think you'd want high, I mean, volunteers that are over 18. So, have you thought about the high school?
She has reached out to the high school, and she's planning to do a presentation at the high school.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Yeah. If there's anything I can do to help.
You need college students out of bed on Saturday morning. That'd be great.
[laughing]
We, we try to get them out of bed. So, that's our biggest hurdle on Saturdays.
Really?
Yeah. We see them at the end of market.
Uh-huh.
Not necessarily at 7:00 AM. So, but we're working on it.
And then I had another question too, um, with the numbers, the amount of walk-ons.
Mm-hmm.
If you walk, um, do, is there any policy that says if you walk on, can you walk on the whole market year? Or if you've, if you've walked on six times, then do you need to, like, flip over into a regular? Or does that?
We, you know, with the commission, we're gonna be discussing that, is where do you advance someone from being a walk-on to a seasoned vendor?
Yeah.
It's hard to be a seasoned vendor because it's a big commitment.
Yeah.
And they only have two weekends off a season.
Yeah.
And they have to be pre, like, we have to know about them. So, for a lot of walk-ons, it's their introduction into the market. They're growing their business. They're, um, they're growing their business model. They're growing their marketing. Um, so they take it kinda slow. We do have some reoccurring walk-on vendors that we might be considering for seasoned vendors this year.
Okay.
From their performance.
Is there a difference in the prorated fees if you were a walk-on for the whole season versus a seasoned vendor? Would you wind up paying more if you were a walk-on every single week?
Yes.
So, there's a downside to just being a permanent walk-on?
Yes. So, we're discussing fees, the Farmer's Market Commission. And we're gonna, we're gonna be discussing that.
And then the other, last question I have has to do with the nonprofits that are on the.
Yep.
The speakers' wall.
Yeah.
Are you seeing an increase in people that wanna be a nonprofit presence? And is there, is there a need for more space? Or is that something you wanna keep to a certain size?
Um, that's a good question. We're seeing the area fill up again. It, it kinda had a, um, a drop when we went from the Jackson Street Lot to Main Street.
Yeah.
But now it's getting pretty steady again. And so, um, we haven't heard from folks that haven't been able to, um, table there. Um, but we'll be watching that this summer. Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Kathleen, do you know when Dr. Peterson's, uh, economic impact study will be finished about the market?
No, I don't have a date on that.
Plan is on that. It's when he gets it done?
No. They, we just released a survey to the business community. Um, so, they'll be getting the numbers back from the business survey. Um, he has all our data sets from our previous surveys and, um, our reports, so.
Oh, and I just thought of a last question. Um, I know, cause a couple people have talked about me, is the, with the cutoff, the other side of the businesses that don't, um, because of Third Street?
Mm-hmm.
Are you, are you all discussing what, about liking the size of the market too and all that, because of the businesses on that side, you know, feel like they don't necessarily have the same benefit?
We're discussing it, but there hasn't been any, um, look at it, at expanding.
Okay.
As yet.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, if they're interested, they need to continue to come to the commission and talk to them?
I think so.
Okay.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm sorry I sound like a frog, but I'm getting over everybody's cold.
Yeah.
But I'm here. Any other questions? Jim, you haven't signed up to play in the, a band at Friendship Square yet.
It could be a conflict of interest. I'll have to ask Rod about that.
Okay.
I won't be able to ta, accept any money for that. I'll have to just, uh, give it to the other members of the band.
I'll give you my answer later. You might not like it right now.
[laughing]
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is, uh, the roll cart usage and storage. Tim Davis.
Good evening. As you are aware, we had some concerns regarding the, uh, the warning labels on the, the new recycling roll carts, as well as the 65-gallon, 95-gallon, uh, solid waste roll carts that have been in use since 2013, um, referring to the "for outdoor use only" warning. Um, we visited, uh, Public Works and Finance Committee twice on this issue. Um, on, following the February 8th meeting, the committee asked staff to craft a statement to further educate, um, folks on, on this issue. Um, I came back on February 25th. Um, our fire officials and legal developed a statement, which I will read. This is a message from Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, Fire Chief and Fire Marshal. "The city of Moscow has received several questions concerning the 'for outdoor use only' warning on the new 65, 95-gallon recycling roll carts, as well as the 65- and 95-gallon garbage roll carts in use since 2013, and where they can be placed. These warnings are intended to brighten notice to users of the new roll carts can be a fire hazard if used inappropriately. Every year, fires are started when someone carelessly scoops ashes containing glowing ambers into garbage or recycling roll carts. If hot ashes, cinders, smoldering coals, greasy or oily materials subject to spontaneous combustion are placed in these carts, the container could melt or ignite. It is recommended that a safe distance be maintained from ignition sources such as luminaires, lights, heaters, flame-producing devices, and other combustible materials. When the garbage and recycling roll carts are used for their designated purpose, they are safe and all sizes can be stored near homes or in garages. Please call the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department if you have any questions regarding the safe use of garbage..." use of garbage or recycling roll carts. And we have Fire Chief Brian Nickerson and Fire Marshal Joe Williams at the bottom. We tried to incorporate some of the suggestions that the committee gave at the February 25th meeting, and with this statement, we're looking to authorize this statement in the upcoming Talking Trash newsletter. Questions?
I'd make a motion that we allow authorized staff to include this in the, in the next newsletter.
Yes, second that.
Okay. In addition to the newsletter, are there any other contemplated public outlets for this bit of news?
Yes. As Jen stated, at that meeting, we have some social media outlets, as well as we, we foresee putting out a press release, and we do have quite a bit of material on the sanitation website as well, so I can see us posting that on the city website.
Yeah, I think a real push to get it out into the daily news someplace reasonably prominent would be a really good idea, to help people understand what the message on the bin is versus its actual use in practice. So get the daily news to put it out there, too. That would be a cool thing.
And I have asked Leitau Sanitation Moscow Recycling for a block on the very front page of the Talking Trash newsletter, which should go to every customer in Moscow.
Cool. Any other comments? Okay.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Thank you.
Now we can store bins in garages. Hooray!
Yay!
As long as we do it appropriately.
Mm-hmm.
Next up, item eight, Heart of the Arts, the 1912 Annual Report 2015, with Dwight Curtis and supporting cast.
Oh, good evening. As you know, back in 2007, the city contracted with Heart of the Arts Incorporated to manage the operations of the 1912 Center, as well as do fundraising and push renovation projects. And for several years, we gave quarterly reports, and, but as time has become more routine, we decided to go annual, and so this will be our first of just, just annual, pure annual, annual. And so with that, I'll turn this over to their executive director, Jenny Kostroff, and she'll give you 2015's rundown.
The scoop!
Thank you, Jenny.
Hello!
Hello.
This is so exciting! Now I can make the whole room laugh! Okay, so, let's see, we've had a pretty good year this year, but I'm going to give you a scoop, because Catherine has never experienced one of these as a council member, and so I can do that now.
I'm super excited.
Heart of the Arts is the group hired by the, the city of Moscow to run the 1912 Center, and we are enriching lives and creating community by operating and restoring the 1912 Center. It's a pretty big job. So we were hired in 2006 to start that, and we took over operations in 2007. This is our current board of directors. Jay Pangola is our president. Duncan Palmetier just joined us as our vice president this year. Tyson Rafferty works at Emcoa Bank, is now our treasurer, and Linda Paul took on the responsibility of secretary. And our directors are a full slate of wonderful folks from all over the community, and we are a full board of 13 this year, which is fantastic! Might be the first time we have all the spots filled, as we know that's a challenge in our jobs. So to review on the fast track, because I think I've been given a, you know, get it going Jenny, program, 2008, we did the renovations to create the Fisk Room and the Arts Workshop Spaces. It added $315,000 worth of value to the facility and opened those two new spots for the public. Then in 2009 and 2010, we started our construction project on the exterior of the facility, working from the west end, replacing those windows and repairing the bricks and the top cornice, and then went to the north side of the facility. And everybody has been asking me, why wouldn't we do the front of the building first? Well, this is why. We will be all done with the exterior work on the building at the end of this year, and we wouldn't have had that be the case if we had done the windows in front. Everyone would have thought we were all renovated, and they wouldn't have helped me with the fundraising. So we did this part first, and then that added $287,000 worth of value and 52 new windows to those sides of the facility in 2009 and 10. And then in 2011, we began the construction on the parking lot, and that started with creating a retaining wall around the backside of the facility along the parking lot. $16,000 worth of work that year, and then we continued fundraising to be able to complete the parking lot at the west end of the facility in 2012. And that was a partnership with the city of Moscow, so that they could meet their code requirements for parking onsite, and we could also be very happy with that result. And we added stairs that go down to Adams Street from the property, which is really great, and then the parking, additional 15 parking spaces on the west end of the facility. And if you haven't come and parked on that side, it's a different experience to park on the west side versus the east side, because we get into habits with the building. If you are a regular user of the 1912 Center, try parking in a different spot, or ride your bike and try the other side's bike parking. And it, it's a different experience to come into the facility. That year, we also made changes to the entrance on the east end, so that there was sidewalk coming in, so you wouldn't have a car, like the top picture, parked in the way of getting inside, which helped a lot. That was a $207,000 phase of construction, and again, that was a wonderful partnership with the city of Moscow. Alisa, oh, she's fantastic! If I can only write grants like she does. We also did some wonderful kitchen upgrades as a part of that project, and that replaced the tile floor in the facility and got us a new hood and stove and double convection ovens, which has caused us to be really popular with the people that bake things in the community that would like to sell those at markets. It's very interesting. Having good ovens helps. 2013 was landscaping and lighting on that east side, sorry, the west side of the property, and that got us our certificate of occupancy. So just like he talked about earlier, about the trees being very important, we put our trees in, we got our plants in, and we lit it up, and then we could occupy properly. 2014 was our east end exterior work, and look how ugly it was to start! So ugly! And we fixed it all up. 22 windows went in in this project, and it was wonderful grant support help from the Inland Northwest Community Foundation and Idaho Heritage Trust for those projects. It was $133,000. Now, we're still under contract with Pioneer Waterproofing on this same contract. We've just continued to add change orders, or add alternates. We've added our alternates, and so we're still under contract with them on the south side of the facility that faces Third Street, but this part of the project was $133,000. And there it is in progress, with the windows, with the holes. I like that one, and the, let's see, is this a pointer? I don't know how to use these things. Oh, well. The second picture over on the top has all the windows out and all the windows brand new on top, and then at the bottom, they're all replaced, and all the plastic is pulled off, and they're done. So that was really exciting to see that get, there you go. Ooh, nice! You carry that on your keychain?
No, it's in my drawer.
Yes! Bag of tricks! How to point at things. 2015, so we started our continuation on the construction project late in the year in 2015. We had done all of our fundraising to be able to do the work, and we're still, we're still maybe a few thousand shy on the windows. So if you'd like to adopt a window, please see me. But the windows, there are 32 windows that need to be replaced on the south side of the facility facing Third Street, and we've got those ordered. They will be coming in the next few weeks, and then it'll be magical. So I should probably just do a big ol' announcement before it happens, so you can be like, wow, look what you've done! But they'll be doing the work on the south side of the facility once those windows are in, because they, they pulled off the project for weather, because you don't want to tuck point in between bricks and have the mortar stick when it's too cold. So all of those, the brick repair, and that top cornice, that's that piece along the top that's really dark. Jim, there you go.
Mm-hmm.
And that's going to be all beautiful white again. It's getting a rust sealant on it, and it's going to be fantastic. So watch for that. I would say late April is when we should be seeing that happen. God, I'm so excited about it! I'm shaking! Okay. And in 2015, we replaced all of our lights. Now, I know everybody liked those ball lights that we had around the property, but they were not dark sky compliant. So we're, we're lighting up the heavens, and so we said, nope, can't do that, especially at a city-owned facility. So we changed out that lighting. That was a Parks and Rec project that we facilitated and paid the little extra on, because the cost of the lights went up between when we thought about getting them and when we got them. So we helped pay for that a little bit, but that was mostly Parks and Rec. And then programming for 2015, this past year, we had our regular community art show. It was Funny Business last year, and we hosted a penthouse picnic fundraising dinner, where we had 120 guests get to dine on the top floor of the facility at a picnic, and it was very well received. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. And then we hosted four free Plaza concerts on the patio, and you can see a picture of that from above. We had a board out that day, so I took a picture from up above. And we just finished our market season with six winter markets, and that finished up. And this is what the thing warned me, spaces to rent picture did not take. It gave me a warning. It said something didn't work in your PowerPoint. Well, there it is. So imagine a beautiful party in the great room, or imagine those hockey players that were here? The squirts were over there having a party when we left to come down here. Jim and I were just up at the building, and the squirts, the hockey squirts were celebrating their season in the great room, having a really great time. But we do rent the great room space. We rent the kitchen with or without the great room, so you can add the kitchen to a great room rental, or you can rent it independently. It's tricky to rent it independently, because we have so much great room use. The Fisk Community Room is a nice 30-plus, under 30 people event space, and the Arts Workshop Space is an under 40-person event space. And Friendship Hall is like a, we call it decorated late attic to early basement, but it is a hangout room that's great for those kid babysittings and other activities that come with other events in the facility, and it's also a space that we don't have to worry about a spill, so it's kind of nice. And then I will take questions, because there might be some! And plus, I was supposed to keep it speedy, right? So...
It was speedy. It was good.
I feel caught up. Yeah. Thank you.
Who has questions for Jenny?
Come on! Where's Walter when we need him?
I know it.
And he didn't send me any to ask either.
He didn't?
He might have asked, wanted to ask about gingerbread, but I don't know.
Yeah, but the gingerbread's all taken care of now. Walter calls the balustrade above the doors gingerbread, and I think it's an appropriate title for it. It's very, it is very lacy.
I know. You could talk about the 1912 sign that you've been doing presentations around the commissions.
It, I haven't presented that to council yet, so you don't get to hear about that yet, so too bad. It's coming. Coming, coming attractions. We are working on a monument sign on the property, and I will be presenting that to council at a later date, because I don't want to mix my things!
Good thinking.
I also have to renew with you guys this year, so I'm going to do that at another date, too! Da-da-da-da-da!
Well-planned political strategy there.
Yeah, I do, I do the informational part first, and then I get into the brass tacks later.
Well, thank you. Nobody has any questions? Thanks, Jenny. It's always a pleasure to hear from you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
I move that we accept the HAI 2015 Annual Report on the 1912 Center.
I'll second that.
Jim seconds. So...
Aye.
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 So it's all accepted. Okay, we're closing in on the end. Now it's time for reports from the council in their liaison capacities with the various commissions with which they work. So, want to lead us off?
I'll be quick, because I don't have any reports. None of my commissions meet till after today.
Man, that's easy.
I only have one. The Clearwater Resource Conservation and Development Council is losing the executive director, so we're going to be having to refill that position. The office manager, Barbie Miller, has taken over in the interim, and she's quite competent. So with, if everything goes according to plan, she may move up into that spot, and it'd be, we'd have some continuity in that case. But Renee Hill is leaving to become a teacher at the Palouse Prairie School, so...
Oh.
That's all I have.
I had Historic Preservation Met, and the correspondence they had was from Palouse Prairie, and they came to present work done by their first and second grade students to do the history of the buildings and drawings about Main Street and City Hall, and the teachers wanted to know if they could get their work to public view, and then they shared ideas about that, and they gave digital copies to Mike. It was interesting. And then, under their regular agenda, Wendy McClure will chair for next year, and they're, and especially since they're finishing up their Fort Russell Historic Project that's been ongoing, and the vice president and secretary will be the same, that's Nels and Erin, respectively. The minutes were accepted from the past months, March, May, August, December of 2015 and January of 2016, and they talked about Preservation Week events that they want, that sponsored together with Leitau County. It's a collaboration that they want to do in May. It was really interesting trying to get some movement up here, and they want to do a clinic in the fall, and so they were processing some ideas. They plan on tabling at the Farmers Market October 8th, and then they went through a whole bunch of houses to decide whether they were contributing or not contributing to the historic district, and they voted on that. And that was the historic district, you know, is from, I guess, its inception to World War II. So it was a great meeting.
Anything from P&amp;Z or the others?
P&amp;Z's coming, because it was a hearing.
Okay. And on my part, the URA met last Thursday, and things are progressing nicely with the Sangria project development at the Sixth and Jackson Lot. They submitted the final design drawings, conceptual design drawings, to the URA, which were accepted, and if everything goes as planned between the final environmental cleanup there of the ammonia spill that's been around for years, and the positioning of their funding, they should start breaking ground sometime this fall, so that'll be going up, and that's starting to make some good progress there. Other projects are going. URA is going to be participating with the developer of the property to, on the southeast corner of Highway 895, to remediate the petroleum spill underneath the old Sharp Oil Site, the Domino's Building, and get that dug up and out so that the rest of the project can proceed. So the URA is making a good amount of progress on several fronts. The Moscow Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, from whom we heard a little bit earlier, is making some good progress. In conjunction with the ASUI, they hosted a landlord-tenant workshop on campus that will be repeated in April for students who are first-time lease signers, and what their responsibilities are, what the responsibilities of the landlord are, how to get your damage deposit back, essentially. So that's going to be going on. There was a fair amount of discussion in conjunction with the Affordable Housing Trust folks about how to get ahold of some land in order to put up some affordable housing and advance that cause. It's a responsibility of Moscow to see that affordable housing is provided without respect to geography or other impediments. So the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be approaching the city with some ideas on that one, and they're making a fair amount of progress on that and several other fronts as well. And that's all I have for reports at the moment.
Okay.
Is there any other business before the council?
If I could just make a quick follow-up to Kathleen's discussion about the market survey, or the market economic impact survey that I believe Councilmember Crossgill mentioned. We do have a business survey out right now. It's on the city's main website, or main webpage, and we'd really appreciate business feedback. That's the one piece of data that wasn't collected in all the surveys that we've done to date, so we'd love, if anybody's available and willing, if they'd take that anonymous survey, we'd appreciate it.
I think it's open until the 9th, isn't it?
It is, and we may extend it if, if folks need a little more time. We're happy to do that, so...
That's it.
Yep.
Until we get all the responses we want.
Just a handful of responses would be great. Just a handful of responses would be great, yeah.
Anything else?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Oh, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.